Good evening, welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, November 5th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing Oh Canada.
Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. I think our first was from our organizational meeting, councillor Bressi.
Thank you Mayor Given, I would move the council approve the minutes of the city council organizational meeting held Monday, October 22nd, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Breeson. Are there any discussion or debate on that set of minutes, any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. We just have one council member whose voting station isn't working. I'm sure it has nothing to do with the pizza that council had prior to the council meeting. Okay, sure, so we will, councillor O'Toole, how do you vote? Councillor O'Toole votes in favor. I will display the results and so we'll just note that councillor O'Toole also voted in favor. And we'll see if we, we'll see how we go on our next vote. Thankfully, we have so many things to vote on this evening. But we'll move on to the council meeting minutes from Monday, October 22nd, councillor Minhas.
Thank you Mayor. I move the council approve the minutes of the city council meeting held by Monday 22nd, sorry, October 22nd, 2018 as presented.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Minhas, is there any discussion or debate on that set of minutes, any thing that we need to correct before we adopt them? Again, seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. There we go, that time everybody went in, thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda, I believe we had one item to add to our agenda this evening councillor Palat.
Thanks Mayor Given. I guess I'd like to adopt the agenda as presented with one amendment, and it would speed adding the municipal government board appeal.
And I think 8.1 is probably where we'd want to add that?
Yeah, that probably makes more sense, yeah.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Palat, any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? And seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda, this is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, it's just one of the ways that council has opportunity to interface with the public. We want to ensure that the public understands that they have an opportunity to come and present to council, of course. In addition to the times where you might see us in the coffee shop or grocery shopping, or on Facebook, or through Twitter, or by email, or by phone. This opportunity also exists at every regular city council meeting. And I don't see anybody rushing the stage, as it were, to present, and so with that reminder, maybe we can close the delegation portion of our agenda. We had no public hearings this evening, we have no items of unfinished business, and so I guess that takes us right to item 8.1 with respect to the municipal government board appeal, and I'll look to councillor Palat for a motion.
Thanks Mayor Given. So I would move that council direct administration to take the necessary steps to discontinue the municipal government board appeal of the correction line west area structure plan. Just to speak to this as a council, we've had a lot of deliberation about this since the spring. Some potential gaps, I guess, in the IDP that we're working on with the county to hopefully update that. And so this is about a piece of land that's out on the correction line, that's 162 hectares in size. And so on Tuesday, August 14th, the city had submitted its notice of appeal to municipal government board. And after a lot of deliberations, we maybe took a thought, you know, maybe, maybe there's a better course of action here. And hopes that this is, seeing the county are initiating intermunicipal collaboration framework discussions. And potentially this, this might have been a stumbling block or not, so for those county councillors that are watching, because I'm sure you love watching the city council meetings, I mean hopefully this is an extension of some good faith that we want to work together with you guys and work on making the best things for our region.
Thanks very much councillor Palat, any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in. So I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and it'll take us to item 9.1, our start of our committee business and the corporate services committee meeting. Councillor O'Toole, was that your set of minutes?
There we go, thank you very much Mayor Given. I make a motion that council approve the minutes of the corporate services committee meeting held on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor O'Toole, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Just to speak on a couple of items, our corporate services leader director Susan Walker has been working very diligently on the budget with her team. And she gave her verbal report on the assessment and taxation, some corporate facility management, finance, information technology services, and some procurement. And Mr Scott Smith from the assessment and taxation manager gave a report on the downtown construction and taxation. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. But I guess you're not off the hook because item 9.2 is also a committee that you're responsible for.
Yes, I just make a motion that council receive the minutes of the arts development committee meeting held Wednesday, October 24th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries councillor O'Toole, anything to highlight from that meeting?
Well, we started the year off with a pretty good pile of money. And when we had our first meeting in the spring, we decided to split the pot, spring and fall session. And we gave out a good portion in the spring, and we gave it all away to different agencies and funding sources. Including the Grand Prairie Singers Festival of Carols. There was $17,500 available at this last round. Grand Prairie Children's Festival received some money. We had individual scholarship funding, one was denied. Sarah Smith, she was accepted for some funds. Kerry, well, the Edmonton Ballet Project received some funny money. And the Grand Prairie Regional College Concert Choir Carnegie Hall Performance also received some money. We had a couple other individuals that received money and groups. And with that, we have no money left in this year's budget. And starting January 1, we should have some more, so. And I think we, I can't tell you the exact number at this point in time, but we funded a lot of projects this year. Thank you.
Thanks for the update councillor O'Toole. And I think that takes us to 9.3 and the infrastructure and protective services committee meeting councillor Clayton.
Thank you Mayor Given, I would move the council accept the minutes of the infrastructure and protective services committee meeting held October 30th as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, did anyone note any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Clayton.
I would move that council that council approve the amendments of policy 607. Speaking to that motion, it allows the opportunity for the waiver of all permit fees, levies, and/or securities identified with respect to global housing projects, city-related projects, and affordable housing projects. This sort of amendment is in particular to the fees of engineering services, inspection services, land management, and planning and development. There is a maximum amount that is allowed to be waived on this at $2,000 per fee. And administration will report back to council on a biennial basis in regards to any of these fees that may have been waived.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Clayton, anything else to highlight from that meeting?
Sure, just a couple of things. We had our verbal update in regards to the downtown rehabilitation project. I'm hoping that by now everyone has noticed that the street is open on 100 Avenue. That project was pretty much bang on on time, so that was great to see. There's a few other things in regards to the director's service area report. November is Prevention of Family Violence Month. There will be a couple of activities, there was a few activities rather on November 1st at the East Link Center. As well, we had an update on construction projects around the, around the city. And pretty much all the work that was budgeted to do this year was done in time, there was a few things that might have to be completed in the spring. We also had an update in regards to Aqua Terra sanitary force main installation. Some drainage work that's being done. And everybody's favorite subject, snow removal. In regards to that, in transportation, the winter shifts begin on November 4th. Other than that, there's not really much else to report, thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, obviously everybody's
I should have one more.
One more.
Sorry, one more, since we don't have a huge agenda. We had a presentation in regards to playground and school zone visibility. And the signage sort of sizes and specifications on what they look like. There are, there have been a few areas throughout the city that have been identified where we will be going above and beyond the expectations and minimum requirements in regards to signs. Some of these areas were identified through input from, from neighborhoods, as well as some of these areas were identified through our own staff assessing the needs and sort of the parameters of, of how that looks like in regards to safety for our people crossing streets, students in playground zones, or youth in playground zones. And so you will see some of these larger signs being installed shortly.
Great, thanks councillor Clayton for that update. We have no items of correspondence this evening, we have no delegations, no notices of motion, so that'll take us council member reports. I neglected to ask in advance at the start of our meeting if any council members had reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions. And so I'll just glance around the room when I see councillor Blackburn acknowledging that he does, and he has two, so please councillor Blackburn, go ahead.
Thank you Mayor Given. First I will mention the Grand Spirit Foundation. We met this past month and it was our first meeting since the passing of our chairman, Mayor Claude Legacy from Sexsmith. The, the meeting went extremely well chaired by our vice chairman. And just to let people know that our organizational meeting for the year comes up in, in November. And so the timing will be right for selecting a new executive at that point. The, the meeting was quite routine in terms of the things that we had to deal with, and there's really nothing from the agenda that I really need to highlight. The other meeting that I attended was the Regional Tourism Association. Again, a regular and rather routine meeting, but I did want to highlight one thing that, that the tourism association is really quite proud of. We were able to work in collaboration with the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie to promote the exhibit called When East Comes West, which is a celebration of Japanese culture. This is this is a brilliant display of 45 kimonos that have been brought to life by the genius of a creator by the name of Ichikyu Kuboto who lived from 1917 to 2003. And he was restoring an art form that had been lost since the 16th century. What's really great about the promotion of this thing is that there has been a special evening set up the, on November 6th, which is tomorrow, and it's a celebration of Japanese culture. It's going to be an opportunity to enjoy some Japanese fusion cuisine. And the unveiling of one of the masterwork kimonos. And there will be performance by the booming tree tyco drummers. And, and a sneak peek at some of the other exhibitions going on at the gallery. It's a wonderful event that's going on tomorrow night between 7:00 and 9:00 at the Four Points by Sheraton. And something that I would encourage people to look into and attend if they can. It's going to be a very impressive exhibit to look at. That's all I have.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn, thanks for the two updates, did anybody else have any external updates? Councillor Bressi, did I see that you had one? No, okay, councillor Palat.
Thanks Mayor Given. We had a tri-municipal meeting last Thursday, just said it was a short meeting, but there was a couple of things that come out of it. We had a presentation from the Coalition of Safe Roads, just telling about some of the reporting on Highway 43 and Highway 40. Interestingly enough, one of the things I highlighted, about 8% of the people that had fatalities were still not wearing a seatbelt, which is kind of surprising that, you know, after all these years of that, that there's still that kind of a number not wearing seatbelts. We also had a presentation from DevCo Development, just kind of giving an update on what's happening with our piece within the tri-municipal area. And we discussed the budget again, but decided to defer until December's meeting, just to have a few more, a little bit more information come back.
Thanks for the update councillor Palat, and I'll just look around if were there any other external reports. If not, then I'll start with councillor Thiessen to my right, I'm sorry, that's councillor Bressi, excuse me councillor Bressi to my right.
Well, thank you Mayor Given, I appreciate it. As I give my roundtable report, I'll try my best not to say something slightly inappropriate, although roundtable is more fun than a shell game, so we'll see how I do. I think the first thing I'll highlight is, obviously, I am a big fan of wetlands and of the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance, the work they do, I mean, look at me, why wouldn't I be? So councillor Palat and I, we went to a workshop put on by the Mighty Peace Watershed for wetlands. And it was interesting learning about, I had no idea that there were a bunch of different types of wetlands, I had no idea about their benefit. So it was, there's four types of wetlands. And it was interesting getting some of the science behind it and hearing some of the importance they have in terms of cleaning up our environment and mitigating floodwater. But I think one of the most interesting things to me was learning that basically all the fees ever taken away from our region to go towards wetland restoration have never been spent in our region. They, those fees go to Ducks Unlimited, and Ducks Unlimited only does work where there's pinnail ducks, which we don't have here. So literally, all the money we've ever paid for that has never had an opportunity to come back to our region. I understand that there's some provincial work being done to look at how they disperse that. And I hope we see some coming back to our region, and I don't know how much we've paid, but that might be an advocacy thing in the future to say we've, historically, we've been ripped off and we need to get more. And that kind of made me angry to hear, but the rest of the evening was great. I think two other highlights that I'll point out was I went to a couple of storm games. I went to a Sunday afternoon game, because I hear those are the least busy ones. And I went to a Friday evening game, because I heard those were the most busy ones, want to see it at both extremes. And I was happy to report and happy to see that I was really impressed with the work they've done on game day experience. My kid sat through all three periods of both games, and that's never happened before, so for them to do that twice in three days was really impressive, so I was proud of our storms, see them given a better experience for their, for their fans, and I'm looking forward to more games later in the season. And then the last thing I'll report, just because it was the most fun I had, was again, I got to go with councillor Palat, we went and to a GPRC municipal government class and got grilled for about an hour and a half by the students there. And that class didn't grill us quite as hard as grade six classes tend to grill you. But it was still really fun getting to talk to some young people and tell them a little bit about what's going on with the city. But also, I wish I would have known earlier my career municipal government existed, because it's a fun place to work. It's fun to tell them, hey, you might want to check this out for job opportunities, because we need you guys, so that's my report.
Great, thanks very much, and we'll move next to councillor Thiessen.
Oh, the real deal eh, oh, here we go. Well, you know, I was only going to talk about one item, but I might as well throw in that I, I took part in the downtown association's kids Halloween parade. It took place at our own municipal building, Theresa Sargent Hall, on the 27th of October. I knew that councillor Bressi was going to do his best Chris Thiessen, I would have invited him to come and co-host with me at that event, but as always, it was a pleasure to get the kids all riled up. In total, I think we counted just under 500 kids, not including parents that took part in that. Every downtown business, especially the ones where you just freshly open up the streets, so the kids were one of the first pedestrians to get to walk on our new downtown sidewalks. But all the businesses are saying, wow, we should have bought more candy, and they started skimping on their candy, whereas they started giving out handfuls, and then they saw the kids kept coming and coming and coming. With me in the back, they were like, oh, maybe we should have made more of an investment this year. So that's for next year, I suppose, and sorry that councillor Bressi wasn't there to, to be Thiessen and Breessen hanging out and doing the co- emcee work. Also, the one event I did want to talk to was this past weekend, I got the opportunity to take part at the Pards 21st Annual Dine and Dance event, it's always a pretty awesome event, this year was a little underattended, I think because there was a bit of a conflict with the CFR booking it on the same weekend, so we lost a lot of the county folk and cowboy folk that otherwise would be there helping to support the cause and fill up some tables, but they still had a very good turnout. About 300 people, I would say, at the five mile hall. And it wasn't just, just the audience that was a bit short, it was Dave Neal from Alberta North Auctions was also down an auctioneer, as they typically do a lot of the auctioneer services to help raise funds for parts. And so he enlisted yours truly to help him do some of the spotting out in the crowd. And I did my best begging, pleading, pointing, you know, trying to intimidate people, my intimidation face needs some work, I have been told. And it wasn't until the end of the night of auctions where we had a winning bidder, I think they were bidding on a small kid's gator. And it was at $700, and the guy who had the highest bid said, no, I want to make it $1,000. So that's kind of talking to the generosity of the people who support the Pards event, it's a great event, and the people who attend are equally great. And so as I was, the auctioneer pointing him out, I said, oh, okay, I got you. And I yelled out $1,000 to Dave Neal, and like, for the already established winning bidder. And he was like, okay, and so he's going once, going twice, he was about to sell it, and then I got this. I got the old timeout from the guy who was bidding, and I was like, oh, wait, timeout, timeout. And Dave, Dave was like, we don't call timeouts at auctions, I'm like, no, no, he's, he's coming up, one sec. And the guy came up to me and whispered something in my ear. And I looked at him and I said, seriously? And he's like, yeah. And I was like, okay, I can do that. And so I turned and I yelled out to the crowd, I was like, he says he'll top it up to $1,500 if I shave my head bald. And so he did, and so now I have an agreement with Kevin from Big Stick Rentals that we're going to do a Facebook Live head shaving of the Afro Man Chris Thiessen, hasn't been shaved in over 12 years, right down to the skin. But I also got a card of a, of a wonderful hairstylist as well, I don't know how much he's going to have to actually style the hairstyle once it's shaved bald, but if you're a big fan of The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe and Aslan the Lion, well, I think that's what we're going to undertake, stay tuned, Facebook Live. We'll be shaving it there and then, all for a good cause of parts, anyways, that's my report, thank you.
Good on you councillor Thiessen for supporting Pards, and I would, you know, I think shearing is probably a little bit more like it, instead of styling, but we'll move on to councillor Blackburn, councillor Blackburn for council roundtable.
Thank you Mayor Given, I'm going to just highlight one event as well, and that is Al Lacusta Day. I went to the Philip J Curry Museum on the 27th of October, where they were celebrating the contributions that Al Lacusta had made to the discovery of the bone bed at Pipestone Creek. And the amount of work that he had done there, the fact that he had eventually discovered a new species that was eventually named after him, being the Pachyrhinosaurus lacusti. And it was a wonderful event. Philip Curry came up from I don't know where he lives, but he came here anyway, and, and spoke for a while about the history of the paleontology work that's done in the province and in Grand Prairie, and specifically spoke towards Al Lacusta's contribution. It was, it was a very nice way to honor a man who made what many would consider quite a silent contribution to the development of our community. It was a pleasure to be there.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn, councillor Palat.
Thanks very good, I had two events I wanted to highlight, the first one, I guess, was the, had some fun at the college with councillor Wesley. It was fun when I was leaving that night when my nine-year-old daughter asked me why they were letting me talk to college students, because she thinks I got held back in school, so it was entertaining to say, no, it was okay to go talk to kids from college. And it was a lot of fun, it was, it was, it was, it was interesting, some of the questions they asked and just how eager they were to learn, and it was, it was, it was a lot of fun to be part of, so it's hopefully something that's can do again, and a shout out to Don Muffett McMaster for inviting us, it was, it was a cool opportunity. The other one that was actually a bit of a highlight was the last weekend, most of council was there, as long as city, county, Sexsmith and the town of Wembley for an Aqua Terra shareholder engagement. First time, I guess, since having on council with that robust of a conversation with all the parties there. I thought it was really good that Aqua Terra is really obviously trying to work on some transparency and stakeholder engagements. So a little bit of a shout out to the staff there, like Baron and Jim Smith from the board for putting that together and letting us have an opportunity to have those kind of conversations as a group, I just thought that was a good step forward. And something I look forward to more with Aqua Terra.
Thanks councillor Palat, councillor Minhas.
Thank you Mayor. I had to start where I should start. First of all, I had a big unfortunate happen, one of our guy get killed by the accident in our community, and he was our driver, and he had his own truck. That happened on October 29th, so I had to spend a lot of time to the community thing putting together, because he was only a couple of year in Canada, and he was just trying to settle down. And then getting, still doing it his funeral and stuff, but then we had a good news, my grandfather, third of the kid is, she's My grandfather, third of the kid, is, she's a daughter, granddaughter. So they had a baby girl, my daughter and Tasha and my big, big room. So that was good news, took my stress level off, seeing them happy in their home. So I was busy with them. And then we went to Aqua Terra Strategic Plan the other day, and I think Mayor will explain the rest of the story. It was pretty good updated on that situation. And just yesterday, Sunday, I happened to be Filipino community, and their councillor of Philippine came from Calgary to see the community. And I realized there's a Filipino community is quarter, quarter of people here, maybe probably up to five thousand, they were saying. And they came out and had good meeting with them. They were, came out to have the dual, dual citizenship, filling out the forms so Philippine, they can have those, who's got Canadian citizenship, they still can keep Filipino citizenship, so they can go back and forth. That was very good meeting with them. So that's about it I have done.
Thanks very much councillor Minhas. Councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I wasn't at the last, last council meeting, so I just wanted to mention a couple of things that I attended that were part of that. On October seventeenth, I attended the Home Hardware Grand Opening on Hundred Street. For those of you who didn't notice, it was a, quite the expansion. Inside, the store's been completely renovated. In addition, they've added numerous amounts of new lines that were new for them, as well as increased amount of inventory. The store is quite massive inside now, so congratulations to them as well. I had an opportunity to attend on my own time, the Travel Alberta Industry Conference. It was a great conference with good discussion and, and opportunities to talk with Minister of Tourism in regards to what the future looks like in, in marketing co-op dollars for tourism events and, and opportunities across the province. As well, on a personal note, this past weekend, I had two sort of big things. There was a Taekwondo graduation that took place last weekend, and my eleven-year-old son got his black belt, so that was a very exciting day. And then on the same day, my thirteen-year-old son did his first day in his job, so it was a big, one's got a job and one's got a black belt. So that was very exciting as well. Been spending a fair amount of time on two other topics, one of them being the Arctic Winter Games Bid Committee. There's a lot of work happening there, and, and thank you for administration that is representing the city in that process, as well as the large group of volunteers that are working on that. It's coming along quite nicely. And in addition, I've been having a lot of coffee meetings with, with ratepayers and, and citizens of the city of Grand Prairie. As we head into budget deliberations, there's a lot of concerns and, and discussion of what the budget looks like going forward. It's a new process for us, so people are trying to learn what the process looks like, how they can get their input into the process. People are used to a different type of process we've done in the past, so they're, as much as we're learning the process, people are learning the process as well. So there's been lots of questions, and so there's been a lot of conversations from business owners, as well as individuals, on what the future looks like for the next, you know, for the next year and the next four years in the budget. So there's been some great conversations there, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. And to start off, Phil Curry is from Edmonton, and I think he had his wife there, Eva, with him, right? There you go. So not trying to correct you, I'm just informing you with the information.
I was just going to say Drumheller.
No. Well, he was very instrumental in the Drumheller Museum. So just to start off with, there's lots of things that I attended that people have already mentioned. So on twenty eighteen International Day of Persons with Disabilities, we are going to have an event on December first. Traditionally, this is December third, but we chose December first in Grand Prairie. It's going to go from twelve thirty till four o'clock in the afternoon. The, the name of this event is going to be called Notice the Abilities. The event will include recognition of some community members, members through the Inclusive Community Award, which is presented to a resident of Grand Prairie and area during International Day of Persons with Disabilities. We call it IDPD. The recipient demonstrates a spirit of inclusion, everyone matters, no one is left behind or left out. The individual made a significant impact in creating a barrier-free, welcoming, and exclusive community. There will also be an art display and door prizes presented by the Healing Arts Program Initiative with the Centre of Creative Hearts, sorry, Centre of Creative Arts in the Grand Prairie. I can tell you that there's going to be lots of little artwork on the table that we've had people with disabilities and many different types of disabilities that have made those, so they're going to be not much extra, and they're going to be for sale as the event goes through the night. And there'll be a two-person script, skit written and performed by two local community members and this drama instructor from the Grand Prairie Regional College. And there will be some food available. The other event that I wanted to brag up a little bit is also, I've been on the Alberta Winter, Arctic Winter Games Bid Committee. I'm representing comfort and food, comfort and care, which under that, I'm looking after the food department. We've been working hard. We've had three very long meetings, and it's going to be, if everything turns out, we'll be very busy in two thousand twenty-two. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. I'll just provide a few quick updates. I've been in Edmonton a couple of times over the last week, last couple of weeks. First was for an AUMA Board of Directors meeting, which is of course my regular position as a director there, but I had the opportunity also to attend the Economic Developers Association of Alberta Ministers Dinner. This, the Economic Developers of Alberta have their own association that gets together regularly, and the Ministers Dinner is an annual event for them. I was there representing the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership, and actually, the partnership had actually sponsored the event, and so I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of the partnership to the entire crowd, which was great to sort of promote the partnership that we have going here. But also, at the dinner, there were a number of high-level civil servants from the provincial civil service, and it was a great opportunity to recognize the work that they do and the important role that they play. I think we've seen with the Tri-Municipal Partnership that there's great support locally, great support from the ministers, and somewhere in the middle is where the disconnect seems to be. And so the chance to highlight the good work that those folks can do on our behalf was, was great. And then also to brag a little bit about the way that the Tri-Municipal Partnership has directed industry's attention to our region. And so it was great to be able to do that while I was already in Edmonton anyhow. And then the following week, I went back to Edmonton for two days of Ministers Opoid Emergency Response Commission meetings, followed by a day of meetings for the Board of the AMSC, which is the Alberta Municipal Services Corporation. It's the wholly owned subsidiary of AUMA. So I'm representing, I'm one of the AUMA board members on that board now. And AMSC is the organization that does the bulk purchasing, energy purchasing, insurance, benefits, pension plans, and a number of other things that municipalities use. The city of Grand Prairie is one of their, their significant customers, and so it's great to learn more about that organization and represent the interests of municipal members like the city of Grand Prairie and our employees that are, have the benefit of some of those programs. And then finally, later on, later on last week, I had a visit from representatives from International Paper and the Alberta Forest Products Association here at City Hall to talk about some issues of shared interest and for the International Paper folks to identify how they intend to do their government relations when they're in our region. And so we saw a lot of opportunities for us to work together on supporting this really important industry that provides a lot of stability, as we all know in the Grand Prairie area. And with that, I think many of the other items have been covered by council, and I will call the meeting adjourned.